You know, as you all know, we didn't get along. You know, I thought he was too procedural-minded and missed the point of the spirit of the law and the spirit of the intent. And, you know, we've had some battles. And you know, we both are pretty strong-minded when it comes to our positions. But it never was personal for me. Never has been personal. And this is about our children. I think that in terms of his presidency, he kept it in order, a little bit more than I would have liked. But he kept it in order. He has been an asset to this community. He probably doesn't know, but I remember him from the fight organization and when he was at our Bureau of American Action League. I remember when he was with Franklin Florence and Minister Scott and David Gant and all the people that helped to make our community a better community for all of us. They fought for this. They fought on the line. And so it gives me great pleasure to be in the fight with President Garcia and to probably about 30 years, at least 35 years for me and certainly longer for President Garcia, to continue this work on behalf of this community and now on behalf of our children. And so I would like to say to President Garcia, Mr. Domingo Garcia, thank you from the board and from the district in grateful recognition and appreciation of the leadership and dedication you provided the Rochester Board of Education from 2004 through 2007. And it gives me great pleasure to give you this.
Thank you.
Oh, wow. I want to thank my colleagues, the board commissioners, the board members for having more patience with me than I did with them. I know. I know they thought that I was difficult and I thought they were difficult, but they had a lot of patience. And they worked well and they were always upfront and respectful. And I appreciate the sincerity that they gave me. You have a good board, you're going to have an even better board coming on in January. I want to particularly thank the staff at the central office and in the district for all the hard work they have done on behalf of our children. I'd like to thank the staff for being respectful and hardworking and providing us with the information we needed to make relevant decisions for the district. I know at times we didn't think you provided enough and you thought you provided too much, but there has to be a balance there somewhere. Nevertheless, I appreciate your professionalism in dealing with the board and making sure that we were always in tune to what was going on. I sincerely, from the bottom of my heart, thank you all for all of that hard work. Thank you.
You know, I'm glad I didn't have prepared remarks because Cynthia's introduction to Domingo made me think that, you know, Shirley and I, we didn't always get along either. I bet you never knew that. Because we, and it's true, we didn't always get along. We served as president and vice president together one year. That was enough. Okay? But hopefully, we did not project that to the community at all. What we did do together was work extremely hard on a couple of policies. The parent involvement policy, one that there was at least one point where we distinctly disagreed and we were not agreeing to disagree. We struggled with it for two years, a full year in committee and then a full year in the community with community conversations. And then we worked very, very hard on the schools of choice policy, one where we did agree, however, the details of it got us mired to the place where we were talking about it for a year and turned that over to the administration to talk about for a year. So we've tackled what I think together were some of the biggest issues that the district faces. We did it with a spirit of genuine caring about what each other thought and making every effort really to understand each other and make whatever accommodations we really felt that we could make. So with that, Ms. Shirley Thompson, thank you. In grateful recognition and appreciation of the leadership and dedication you provided the Rochester Board of Education from the year 2000 to 2007, thank you, Shirley. Thanks.
And I can't close without saying thank you to the members of central office who have worked alongside the board to assist me personally and the board collectively. In many cases, I've come to know the superintendent's employees, especially confidential secretaries, like they were board staff. And once we, once you get the board-administration relationship right, there'll be no stopping this district. I can't say enough about the Board of Education staff. Where are you guys? Yeah, yeah. These are the people. You're busy typing, but I'm also talking about you, Linda, and the other staff. These are the people who have been in the thick of it in many ways. They've worked to help the board carve out a meaningful identity, to be effective and efficient. They've been our eyes, ears, and representatives, making us look good and be better when we couldn't do that for ourselves. Thank you. Thank you. And I feel a tremendous amount of gratitude to the community that allowed me to serve for these eight years. The people who emailed and wrote and called me because they believed in my ability to help them. The people who stopped me in the street to talk with me about a decision of mine or to let me know they had voted for me and to keep up the good work. Thank you. And my family. I can't find the words to express my deep love and appreciation for you. My family has supported me from day one in ways that are just too numerous to mention. I can only try to express my appreciation in the quality time and the quantity of time we're going to spend going forward. I need to ask my husband Jim to stand up to just be acknowledged. He has been my rock and my son. He's representing my children and in-laws and grand. My eldest, our eldest, Erin. Thank you. And as much as I'm eager to be with my family, it's going to be hard to let go of this life. So I've tried to think of ways to kind of ease myself away. I have, we receive our Friday packets in these envelopes. And so I'm leaving some addressed with my name. And you don't have to put anything in them, but just send them to me over the next few Fridays. You know, and that will help. We've managed to, somehow, the board staff has managed to get everyone's cellphone and they've put my number on speed dial. So when you feel you need to reach out to me, you just hit the speed dial on your cellphone. And unfortunately, I've learned that even former board members aren't allowed to place electronic bugs in the conference room, so that's not going to happen. But finally, for those of you who want to know what I'm going to do with all this extra time, let's see, I'm going to rejoin the community. I live up in the 14621. They call it the hood, the crescent. We're going to return it to being a neighborhood. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a lot more karaoke. I have missed it immensely. I'm going to clean my house more. I'm going to hang out with my grandkids. I'm going to return to school. My first two years in college showed me I was not ready for primetime, so 40-something years later, I'll be heading back. I'm going to do some leisure reading. Did I mention I'm going to do karaoke? Yeah. And I'm going to process this experience. And I'm going to thank you again, all, for the role you've had in this journey. Thank you so much.
I would like you to get up and help me give Bill Cala a big thank you for the work he has done with the district. You know, when we were looking for an interim superintendent, it was no easy task. We wanted a Superman. We wanted somebody to come in and do what needed to be done and be willing and able and ready to do it no matter what. And we knew that it was going to be difficult working for seven people. And we decided that Bill Cala was the man who could do that. I didn't know Bill Cala from a bag of bin, but I came, I've come to respect and admire Bill for his openness, his clarity of vision, his leadership, his ability to work with people of all kinds, all types, the ability to see good in everyone and try to get the goodness out of people. I admire Bill. I have come to admire Bill. You know, I always, I'm always looking for people who I would like to be like. And I tell my kids, "Don't be like me, Bill. Be like somebody else, somebody that you can admire." And if you admire me, that's fine, but try to find other people that you think you can emulate throughout your lifetime. In any case, we have a plaque for Bill in appreciation for the work he has done and the leadership that he's provided to the district. And he said, "Presented by the Board of Education of the Rochester City School District in appreciation of your service to the students, parents, staff, and community in 2007, December 20, 2007 by the Board of Education." Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I wasn't expecting this, so I didn't put anything on paper, Shirley. I want to thank the board. I want to thank all of the community for giving me the opportunity to work for the children in this district. I don't have much more to say than that because it's all about kids and it's all about working for the children and everything that we need to do. And if there's only one message that I could possibly leave is that to the new board, to all of the staff here, every move we make, every decision that we make, has to be with children in mind and for no other reason. If it doesn't have kids in mind, if it isn't for the benefit of kids, we shouldn't be doing it. So I thank you for giving me this opportunity. I think I got more out of this than you did. So I truly appreciate that. My wife and I, I want to thank my wife for putting up with all of this. Back there, say hello, Joanna. We will be leaving for, back for Kenya on February 10th. And we look forward to that and working with the children over there. We won't, I'll never forget you. And I will leave all of my personal information with everyone so that we can stay in touch. So thank you very much again.
A special organizational meeting of the Rochester Board of Education was held in early January 2008 to welcome two new school board commissioners and officially swear them in, along with three returning commissioners. Newly appointed superintendent of schools, Jean-Claude Bizard, presented his vision for student success with his first presentation to the school board. Students First is pleased to present highlights from this historic meeting. Please enjoy.
Commissioner-elect Williams, his father passed away, and so he is not able to be with us tonight, but he was sworn in. Ms. Campos, she will be sworn in by Mayor Robert Duffy.
I, Sajid.
I, Melissa Campos.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New York.
Of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Commissioner of Schools.
Of Commissioner of Schools.
According to the best of my ability.
According to my ability.
Thank you. I will take it.
And first of all, I'm honored to serve this Rochester community, to be a representative for the Latino community, and am honored that the voters selected me to serve them. And just a few people, I will be brief for sake of time, but the first one is my husband, David, who's sitting right in the front row, who walked with me every single day, every weekend, has been a support. He is the most amazing partner in life that I could imagine. Right next to him is my top PR agent, my brother, Herb, who's always supporting me. And then also my parents, who really have instilled a passion of the Rochester community and just a passion to be able to give in me. And I really, without them, they're the foundation, I couldn't be here today. So first, I want to thank you guys. Secondly, for those who have supported me, first, I have the privilege to have Mayor Duffy swear me in, and your leadership is just inspirational and looking forward to working with you. Also, Assemblyman David Gant, for all of your support. It's been extremely helpful and I truly believe that we'll be able to work together in the future. And of course, the man who introduced me to public service, my mentor, Jose Cruz, who is back there in the corner. And so I thank him for the gray hairs that I'll be getting. And of course, Domingo Garcia and Roberto Borgos, who really helped me throughout the campaign. Ken Warner, his dedication in the campaign, he taught a lot of people who didn't really know much about campaigns, a lot over the year, or over the year, yeah. And there's many others, but we'll be here until midnight. So I'm just going to say an overall thank you to everyone and to my new colleagues. I really look forward to the journey together and to give our kids the world-class education that they deserve, give them hope, and give them to success. And I'm dedicated to this and really look forward to accomplishing this together and collaboratively. And to Superintendent Bizard, congratulations. From what I've seen, you are a caring, courageous, and persistent leader, and that's something that this district needs in order to lead the district. And I look forward, and I'm sure the board looks forward, to partnering with you to make sure that that happens because that's what's important. It's about these kids. In creating a shared vision together, working together, it is time for the change for our kids, for this community, and I can't wait to get started. So thank you very much for your support.
I, Malik Evans.
I, Malik Evans.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of Commissioner of Schools.
The duties of the office of Commissioner of Schools.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I just first want to thank my colleagues for their support and also extend a heartfelt thank you to the citizens of this community for allowing me to serve another four years, another four-year term. I truly believe that elected school boards are true representatives of our democracy. Thanks to my family and friends, my mother and father in particular, who pushed and inspired me every day during my years as a student in the Rochester, student in the Rochester City School District and continue to do so today. I submit to you that we are living in interesting times around the globe. Bloodshed continues in Kenya over the recent reelection of the president. Pakistan is on the brink of internal political collapse, and the United States is still engaged in a war that has hit close to home. Tomorrow, voters go to caucus in Iowa, and the winner could possibly be our next president. Here in Rochester, we too are going through changing times. We are welcoming a new superintendent tonight, Jean-Claude Bizard, and we have a newly constituted school board and city council. There's a saying that goes, "The more things change, the more they remain the same." My friends, we must shatter that cliche. Our graduation rate cannot remain the same. The violence in our streets, which is a symptom of our family and educational breakdown, cannot remain the same. Our lowered expectations for poor, mainly minority youth cannot remain the same. And lastly, our operating at times in disunity in our communities cannot remain the same. The African proverb states, "When two elephants fight in the grass," when two elephants fight, it is the grass that suffers. Well, the grass, in this case, is our children. We must be united in our fight to ensure that every single child is educated. Yesterday marked the last day of the celebration of Kwanzaa, and I'm still working off some of the pounds I put on it. And the day's principle yesterday was imani, which means faith. My mother always said that we must keep the faith even if it is as small as a mustard seed. I believe that, but I also know that the Good Book tells us that faith without work is dead. So we have work to do. We are a strong committee board, and I believe that much of the work that will take place on the ground floor and make its way up to the winding staircase will be, where it will have an impact, will be done at the committee level, and will have an impact on each and every one of our children. So briefly, I believe as we go forward and work within our committee structure, I believe that our committees have key roles that we have to take on this year. The community and the governmental relations committee must ensure that our parents are true partners, that our relationship with other government bodies are strong, and that we are open and transparent. There is work to be done in continuing our collaboration with the city around a host of issues such as truancy, shared services, also strengthening our relationship with business, education, and community-based organization. Governance must make sure that our board and all its tentacles are functioning. Governance must monitor our goals and benchmarks, trying always to make sure that we are functioning as a strong unit, and above all, making sure that we have the tools to make our organization successful. Policy. Policy must continue to ensure that we are up to date and that the board approves policies that makes sense and are being implemented without any variations or hesitations, and that if there are any trepidations that they are being, that they are, that they find, they are being brought to the board's attention. Finance. Our key committee in overseeing the budget, we must be aligning our dollars with successful programs and making sure that all expenditures are in line and due diligence is said in every member's mouth as they sleep at night. Due diligence, due diligence. Audit. Our audit committee serves a vital role and must ensure that every dollar is accounted for and is being spent as prescribed. Bottom line is, the audit committee serves to protect the great and disgrace institution and keeps all of us out of trouble. And lastly, quality assurance. When it comes to our graduation rate and successful programs, this is where the rubber meets the road. This committee, known for their marathon sessions, must continue to make sure that we as a board are duplicating and expanding programs that work and scrapping those that don't. I thank you all for your support, and I will strive to be the best president I can. I look forward to working with our incoming superintendent, and I believe that together we will accomplish plenty. Thank you.
I, Sajid.
I, Willie Colwell.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New York.
Of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Commissioner of Schools.
Of Commissioner of Schools.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And I really need to first and foremost thank my husband, Don Powell, for 10 years of dealing with a professional political life, one that he generally curses every night before he goes to bed. At the other end of the spectrum, I greet Rob Brown, who accepted the invitation along with other former board members, Darryl Porter and others, to bear witness to this ceremony. I thank Rob for his help in launching my career 10 years ago. I think I'm at the place where I'm more or less standing on my own two feet, Rob. Thanks for all the help. And I see Dr. Walter Cooper in the front row, who was our Board of Regent member at the time that I was a new board member 10 years ago, and I appreciate your coming here tonight. In the past, have not made a big deal of the swearing-in ceremony, did not invite friends and family, but this year I did, maybe just to show off the fact that I got the mayor to say yes to swearing me in. But friends from my church and friends from the Democratic Committee, I thank you all for attending. It's been a joy this year to campaign with your help and knowing that every one of you in my, in my church family, in my extended family, in my political family cares as much about education as they do about the other aspects of politics. It's not all about, you know, who can beat who to a political pulp. It's really how can we make a difference in our community? And I thank you all for being here to bear witness to that.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell.
I, Sajid.
I, Van Wijk.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Vice President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully discharge the responsibility. Tell me, I didn't. I'm talking it down a little bit.
The office of Vice President.
Of the office of Vice President.
Of the Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Good evening. Oh, come on. Y'all could do better than that. Good evening.
Good evening.
It is a good evening. I haven't prepared long remarks. I just want to say, first of all, thank you to my colleagues for the confidence that they have shown in their vote today. It is truly appreciated. More importantly, I want to say thank you to you all, as President Evans, I'm not going to get used to saying it, President Evans, we said, President Garcia for so long, but as President Evans said, you all made this possible a year ago for me to even be on this board, just short of a year. And I do owe you a debt of gratitude because, as you all know, for years, I was sort of on the other side of the district and I sued them for many years. Right, Michael? And I can tell you, I feel very blessed working with Michael instead of working against him. I feel very honored to work with the superintendent instead of working against him. And I dare say, I think it has been a positive experience, not only for me, but for the community. We've had success since we began saying 10 months ago, "It's the graduation rate, stupid." And thanks to Dr. Cala and thanks to Dr. Rivera, we saw, and I should mention Dr. Kim Dice Paquette, we made significant gains in the senior graduation rate this year. If you don't know it, you need to learn about it. This district made significant strides this year in the graduation, senior graduation rate. I should also mention that great work was done by my colleagues on this board. Sometimes we're criticized for being a bit proactive. Don't let anybody tell you, Jean-Claude, that it's micromanaging. It's just caring about every child the way you do. So we hope to work progressively and proactively with the superintendent, allowing him to lead, but also allowing us to lead as well. I really... I really look forward to working with you, Jean-Claude, because I think you will lead this district in a way that will make us all very proud. And to Mayor Duffy, who is sitting there. Hi, Bob. We appreciate, and I think I can speak for the board, we appreciate your willingness to help us and constantly talking about the graduation rate and literacy. These are important issues, because we can't have a successful city unless we have a successful school district. But more importantly, to everybody else, and I see so many familiar faces, because you all will come out to these meetings when nobody else does, to coin a phrase, it is about every child. And your presence here today and your support from, and I'm not going to get myself in trouble. I see DA Mike Green back there, I see Joe Robach. I saw, I've seen a lot of good friends, I'm not going to get myself in trouble, very supportive people, who care about every child. Elaine Sproul, let me just say. And I appreciate your effort, and as does everyone else. So, I look forward, Mr. Lightfoot back there. I look forward to your continued support for this district. And once again, thank you for making it about every child.
Thank you. Today is kind of like the first day of school for our superintendent, for our new superintendent. It's his official first day on the job. He's been getting up to speed for weeks in preparation for his move to Rochester. We snagged him from New York City, and we are pleased to have him with us. And he will be sworn in today officially as superintendent, because they also need to be sworn in and take the oath. And he'll be sworn in by Dr. Walter Cooper.
I, Jean-Claude Bizard.
I, Jean-Claude Bizard.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
The Constitution of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of superintendent of school. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Superintendent Bizard, I know you'll be presenting your plan of entry briefly later at the end of the meeting, but if there are some comments that you wanted to make now, please feel free to do so.
First and foremost, I want to say thank you to all the friends and family and colleagues in New York City who are rooting for me right now, who are in Massachusetts and across the country. I also want to thank you for your vote of confidence with a 7-0 vote. I promise I won't let you down or other kids of Rochester City. But I also want to give a special thanks to, well, I've been called doctor by a number of different people, but I wanted to introduce the real doctor of my family, Dr. Brooke Stafford, who left her careers in New York City to join us here in Rochester to work with me. She's my significant other, and she's going to be part of my work in moving up and moving this issue forward. Again, thank you, thank you to the community, thank you for your help, thank you to Mayor Duffy. I've been welcomed by a number of different people here, and it's been wonderful. Today, I had a fantastic day, meeting with staff here from the Central Office, as well as the principals and assistant principals of the district. We had, I believe, nearly a hundred people, 120 people show up today at a meeting. We talked about vision, we talked about the work ahead of us in the district. We have a number of amazing principals, and the work, really, they're the ones on the front line. They're the ones we have to support. So the goal for us is to make sure that everything we do here in this building is aligning to supporting them out in the field. Thank you.